Okay, we'll begin our October 30th Board of Commissioners work session. First on our agenda is our financial recap, so I'll ask Alicia Cersey, the Finance Director, to come forward and present these items for us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have before us the financial statements ending on September 30th of 2025. We ended the month of September with a year-to-date revenue of $11,722,926,000 compared to last year of $11,181,115,000. That is about 13.7% of our budgeted revenue. We ended the month with expenditures of $25,715,021,000 compared to last year at $20,509,646,000. This year's expenditures is about 30% of the budget. Now, we had a couple of capital projects that are included in those expenses. If we remove those, we're at $21,453,000, and that's about 25.1% of our budget, which is dead on where we should be for the year since we're three months in. On the revenues, we're seeing good cash flow from motor vehicles, which is about $150,000 over last year collections. Our local option sales tax is about $300,000 more than last year, and our total tax revenue's up about $700,000 over last year. So, we're seeing good revenue flows on those items. As far as our cash is concerned, our general fund cash is at $32,717,660,000. That's down about $2 million from last year, but we've had some capital items that we've paid for out of that. So, I think we've still got an adequate reserve, and we are at our lowest cash balance for the year. We will start positive cash flowing in October as we get in that insurance premium tax payment in mid-October, so we're starting to see cash pick up. We're also seeing collections of property taxes which started in October, so that cash balance will recover here shortly. For our 2015 SPOLOX projects, we didn't pay out anything in the month of September. For our '21 SPOLOX projects, we have total expenditures for FY 2026 of $3,288,000. And we had a majority of that was the sheriff's cars that we purchased, the new Dodge Chargers that were approved last month, I believe. And then we had some expenses related to roads and also some LMIG money. But we're seeing SPOLOX collections steady to increasing. We're still seeing good collections as far as that's concerned, so that's good news for us.
Ms. Cersey, on the revenue budget portion that's been realized, we're basically flatlined from prior year-to-date, but on the budget that's been realized on the expenditure side, we're about 5% ahead of last year. Is that just an anomaly, you think, or have we had maybe some additional?
That's because of those capital purchases.
Okay.
The expenses are.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move into the agenda for Tuesday night. The first item on the business session is a request of approval to equip the 12 patrol vehicles that we approved of late last month or in August. So, Captain Keith Price is here to present this item for us.
Thank you, Commissioners. Here tonight, request funds for equipping the 12 cars that we purchased. There's actually 10 new chargers, and then we purchased two additional chargers out of the county drug fund, I believe it was. Two chargers from the drug fund were actually mostly equipped with used equipment, so there's a couple of new items we had to finish equipping them. But the other 10 cars should be equipped with new equipment. So, we're asking for an amount of $196,197.31, and that'll be for all the equipment, whether it be push bumpers, cages, consoles, radios, cameras, everything. This also includes the decal striping for each individual car. And additionally, the cameras in the cars, we're putting 10 new GTAC camera systems in along with purchasing 10 body cams to replace aging body cams.
Any questions for Captain Price?
Captain Price, thank you for taking my call earlier. With regards to the vendor, this vendor, I guess, is local, and you were explaining that if you have an issue.
That's correct.
You can provide, I guess, better service than if you tried to go with a vendor out of town.
That's correct. We've, in the past, we did the bid process for the different equipment and stuff. We've checked with other vendors from out of county. Metropolitan Communications is going to be the vendor that we're requesting to equip our cars. We use them regularly. They're an in-county, local company that, number one, they typically beat the other vendor cost when we do a bid process on it. And like I said, if a car goes down or something, they're right here at us that we can get it fixed quickly. We don't have to ship the car over to, say, Forsyth or Gwinnett County or something of that nature to try to get it equipped.
Yes. And on the body cams, I'd asked you the question about IT perspective as far as storage, and you had explained to me. Can you just very briefly talk about how you had upgraded, and now there's not necessarily a strain on a local server with as far as the storage capacity?
Sure. So, the camera systems, this year I swapped over to a company called GTAC, and it actually has a cloud-based server instead of an onsite server at the Sheriff's Office. So, the company actually maintains that server and the storage of all the videos for both the in-car camera systems and the body cameras. So, we don't have to maintain any kind of server or anything of that nature. We do pay an annual fee for the cloud service, but on flip side of that, with WatchGuard, we did that also with license fees. So, it kind of offsets both ways.
Thank you.
Are y'all going to put this on a consent agenda? Do you want to check with Steve?
Yes or no?
Yes. You put it up?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to item 11-2, a consideration approval amendment to the Carroll County Civil Service Personnel Policy and Procedures. And we've got the County Attorney, Avery Jackson, here to present this item. And if I remember last year, when we voted on this, you won like a six months. We're a little bit past the six months, but here we are for you.
Yes, ma'am.
And for everyone.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We have before you for your consideration, this is the changes to the county's handbook to implement the policy that this board voted on and approved last July. If you might remember, we started in April, and we worked in May and came before the board at a work session with some final policy information in June, and then this board voted in July to start a PTO policy to move from sick personal leave and vacation to one paid time off policy that incorporates all those different leave areas. And we said at the time it was going to be an experiment, and it was going to be a big transition. And the board made those changes effective January 1 of this year, and so we had six months to transition the employees from the old system to the new system at the beginning of this year. Those policies went into effect, and as the chairman mentioned, we had said that we would come back with the final language once we had saw how the experiment operated in practice and see if there were any changes or tweaks that need to be made before we put the final language into the policy. And so, the changes for your review and approval at the meeting are the changes to the policy that, again, implement what was adopted last year, except for three little tweaks that are those things that we've realized over time that, hey, this needs to be addressed, or the employees have come to us and said, hey, this is something you might want to look at, and we looked at and said, you're right, this is something that we can tweak and adjust. So, one of those is that under the policy, if an employee went on an extended absence, such as FMOA leave for six, 12 weeks, or whatever it may be, that employee, while the employee was out, would not be eligible for bonuses, retention pay, or other types of pay like that that accrued during that period. And some of the employees said, well, if you've got a good employee that's been here for 10 or 15 years and that has a medical issue, that goes out and comes back, and is going to be a good employee, then we want to recognize that employee, make sure that they get that compensation that they had earned by being at the county and working that long. And we said, that's a point well taken, and that is something we need to look at. So, we changed that to say that if an employee returns from that extended leave or absence, then that employee is then eligible for that bonus or retention or whatever might have accrued during that extended absence period. So, that was one of the changes. The second change is that, under the policy, as originally adopted, we wanted the employees to take up to 108 hours per year. Of course, we're paying out hours that they bank over a certain amount, and so we want to make sure that employees use a certain amount, both because we want to make sure that they're taking vacation instead of just working. They're more productive if they take leave, and that's part of the point of the policy and why it was written the way it is, is because you want your employees to take some time off that they've earned, and then they come back more productive employees. So, we wanted to have that minimum 108 hours that all the employees take. But what we realized is that during the first year of an employee's, the first calendar year that an employee's with the county, that it's their probationary period. They need to be here learning, and they need to, their supervisor wants them here and wants them not taking all their leave as it's accrued, and so we didn't want to require them to do that. Previously, they weren't accruing leave until after the probationary period. We changed that because we had the new employees that were coming, and we wanted, if they had a wedding or funeral or vacation already planned, we wanted them to be able to take that when they showed up to the county. So, we allowed it to start accruing, but we don't want to require them to take that. We want to allow them to bank it during that first year, and we want them to be at work learning their job. So, the tweak, the change that was made, is that during that first calendar year of employment, they're not required to use that 108 hours. The third tweak that we made to the policy for your consideration is if an employee is separated during that probationary period, they don't get paid out for their accrued PTO leave. Again, prior to the change, they weren't accruing during that period anyways, so that had not come up. But when we started allowing that accrual day one, we realized that, well, we don't, although they're accruing it, you know, it's kind of, it's a working test period, that's what it's called in the policy. It's for them to see if the job fits them, to see if they fit the job. And so, if it doesn't work out, then we shouldn't be required for that added expense of paying out accrued leave that they had accrued during that time with the change of the policy. So, that's the third little change that is proposed. So, we have before you the redlined version showing all the changes to the language that incorporate the policy that you adopted last year and these three minor tweaks to that original change to the policy for your review. And if you see anything that you have any questions about or concerns, or that you think we need to address or look at, feel free to let us know. This did go before the Civil Service Board. The Civil Service Board reviewed it and approved it. One question that was brought up at the time was the differentiation between the 24-hour employees, 12-hour employees, and 8-hour employees. And you might remember that we did talk about that at length when we discussed it last year, and, well, we sent them the clips of that work session where we discussed that in detail, and everybody reported back that they were fine with it after that point. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
Mr. Jackson, thank you for you and the other staff's help in bringing this before us. I think it looks pretty good. The only comments I've got, and I think a recommendation maybe to tweak the first point that you brought up, there's really three things that are going on with the first portion, and we fixed, I think, partially that. Before, if they were out for an extended period of time, it would automatically make them ineligible, and so we fixed that now to say that you're eligible. But then you've got two other scenarios. So, if that happens, let's say, three months before payment is rendered, and then they're back in the workforce, that scenario would fix it, that language, simplistic language. If they are out during the time that the payment is rendered, then that creates another scenario, because it creates a scenario, are you going to require them to come back for an extended period of time before then they're eligible? So, if they're out during the time that the payment is rendered, and you're now stating that they're going to be eligible if they come back, are they eligible just for coming back 24 hours? Are they eligible coming back for one week or two weeks? And so, from that language, I think we need to have some additional verbiage in there that would deal either with retro pay or something, shall be entitled, some kind of additional direction that if they're out during a time period, maybe when the payment is rendered, or there has to be a process when they come back that they're for a certain amount of time. I just want to make sure that that language is shored up. I think we all know in the moment what the intention is, but we've talked about it a lot of times, does that intention carry on down the line if it's a new set of people, a new set of eyes that are looking at something when a scenario comes up? So, I would just like to see that a little better spelled out to ensure that if an employee is out during the rendering of the payment time, that that coincides with whatever requirement time that they are supposed to have on the books when they return to be eligible again for the payment.
And we originally defined extended absence of leave as two weeks, and we also defined the period of time that the employee has to return to be eligible for anything that accrued while they were gone as two weeks. So, we have that in there, but it does say that the employee may be eligible when the employee returns for that two-week period of time. So, I mean, if the board wanted it to say shall be eligible, or shall receive, or shall receive retro pay, then we could certainly put any of those.
Well, there may be other circumstances. Well, there may be other circumstances outside of just that particular policy that would make them ineligible to receive it. I don't know what that would be. So we may not want to have language that they're absolutely guaranteed just because they come back to work if it's in conflict with another policy. But what I'm stating is that, to me, is a gray area that needs to be shored up, that if they're not disbarred for any other reason, they shall be entitled to retro pay so that there is no ambiguity in the interpretation down the road of what that intent is.
Okay, sounds good.
Hey, I just want to say, barring making those changes, I think it's three good changes we made, and I hope it shows the employees that we always trying to advocate for what's better for them.
So are you good with the consent, or do you want to work on it with Avery in the meantime and bring it back?
Well, I think we can put it on consent, and then if, I don't think we're agreeable to a language, then we can take it off of consent. I don't think it's that big of a change.
Yeah, yeah, we'll look at that.
And I'm sure Miss Blackman will want to look at it as well, but.
Yep, and Lori Blackman's here too, if there's any questions or if you have any questions about the employees' responses or any feedback that we've received over the time period. And yes, we can look at that, and we can circulate it to everybody via email and see if it works for everybody.
So I'll put it on consent for the moment, and if anyone wants to take it off come Tuesday, we're free to do that. Okay? Thank you, Avery. Okay, let me go back to. Okay, 11-3, we have our Fire Chief Dave Wade here for a consideration of proposals for non-fixed generators. And Dave, while you're walking up, Steve, are you good with putting that on consent agenda? The 11-2, which was a paid time off, tweaking?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dave.
Good afternoon. So I'm coming to you today from the committee's review from the vendors for the installation and purchasing of the generators that was a FEMA grant from about two years ago. We're still getting this thing in work in order. So the committee consisted of Amy Gilzwee from Emergency Management, Captain Eric Parr from our Fleet Division, and then Davey Spratlin from Public Works from the Maintenance Division. The committee evaluated all the proposals, and they based that off of experience, response capability, integration, compliance, and then the cost. There were seven vendors total, I believe, that actually was in the pre-bid meeting, but only two returned packets to the committee. So Buck's Electric and Anderson's Electric were the two that responded. The point scale was 100 points, with 10 points of that for the cost. Buck's Electric scored 92 points out of the 100, with Anderson's coming in with 58 points out of the 100. The committee recommended Buck's Electric, and they will be giving a Caterpillar generator, a 40-kilowatt generator, and the lead time on that's anywhere from 20 to 26 weeks. So that also does the pre-installation training, and it does have the two-year warranty for the generator. The total cost of the entire project and the grant was $690,469.71. Our local match was $172,617.43, which we voted on that several months ago from our SPOLOX fund. So Buck's Electric was come in at $678,414,000, and I'm making the recommendation that we select Buck's Electric for this project.
Chief, you and I discussed that the power will probably never go off again now that we're getting this prepared.
We can only pray for that.
All stations get the same generator?
Yes, sir. All nine of those will be the same CAT generator. And we already have CATs in the fleet as well, so.
I forgot to ask you that earlier.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's no further questions, or are y'all good with putting 11-3 with nine fixed generators on the consent agenda? Steve?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Our 11-4 is an approval to replace deteriorating piping and dispensers for the older fuel site at our Public Works location, and we have Danny Yates, Director of Public Works, with us.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, back in July, the EPD came and done inspection on our old fuel sites. Our old fuel sites is where we fuel our dump trucks, tractors, heavy equipment as it's leaving the yard, so we don't have to go up to the new sites next to the office. And EPD has found our piping is deteriorating, and it's not holding pressure. They're not saying we're leaking fuel anywhere. They're just, we're just having problems with pressure. And so we brought in a third-party vendor to come in and do the testing. And between them and the EPD, they recommended replacing all the piping underground and replacing the dispensers and pumps. These pumps were put in, I think, in the late '80s. All this work was put in in the late '80s. And the dispensers, a lot of them old dispensers, on the inside of them, they have a little pail which is made to catch the gas and the fuel. And they're designed to do that if they have a problem. And that's what he said, we're catching too much fuel. They're leaking too much fuel out of the dispenser. So he recommended replacing the dispensers while we're tearing the ground up and doing this whole project. He said, we'd be money a head. We could only get one company to give us a price to do this, was MECO. They're the ones that service our new fuel sites now, and their cost was $149,172,000.
Mr. Yates, we discussed this earlier. I've read through the report, and the report had stated that the original piping had a manufacturer's defect, which really rubs me the wrong way, and I know that was before our time. We had discussed that moving forward, you were looking at having this inspected, obviously to make sure that we're covering ourselves before the dirt is put back over it.
That's correct.
And then we had also discussed, I had asked if there was the possibility, if the EPD, especially since we're an intergovernmental agency, if they would be willing to come and look at it so that we don't have additional costs to hire an outside firm. And I don't know if you've had time to research that yet or not, but that's something that I would ask, at least to pose the question if you haven't yet.
I will make the call to our inspector, the one that came, and see if he will return and inspect everything before it's covered up. I mean, like, as I told you, it will be pressure-tested by a third party before it's ever covered up. But also, we'll let him look at it and make sure it's to his satisfaction.
Thank you.
Are y'all good putting this on a consent agenda? Steve?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Danny. And next, 11-5 is also for you.
Yes. This is a memorandum of agreement from the DOT. They're wanting to replace another bridge in Carroll County, which we're all, I'm all for that, as many bridges as they want to come and replace. This is a lot like the one we done in Commissioner Lee's district with the WISTCR level. They're asking for us to pay $75,000 toward right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation if needed. And then, as before, if any money, any funds are left when they're done, they return the excess back to the county.
So are y'all good with a contribution of $75,000 towards this bridge?
Absolutely, yeah.
Considering it's a several-million-dollar bridge, I think it's a pretty good deal.
Yes, sir.
Great. All right, thank you. So our consent agenda is 11-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. So come Tuesday night, mainly what we'll have to discuss will be three different zoning sessions, excuse me, three different zoning applications, and there will not be an executive session meeting on Tuesday night. So thank you for your time, and our work session is ended.